Franklin County Board of County Commissioners, nine session. Commissioner Jones, would you lead us in the prayers and the praise?
Yes, sir.
Praise and praise.
Our Father, we thank you for this day that you've given each and every one of us. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Pray that you would be with us in all our discussions today. We thank you, Lord, to know that, God, you are with us and if we lack wisdom today, you can give it to us. Father, let us not only decide about today, but the future that the other residents and those that are behind us are going to have here in Franklin County. Help us to make this place better for them and with them in mind, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Our late allegiance to the flag of United States of America, due to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Good morning. Next on the agenda will be payment to the county.
Second.
Second. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masters, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously. Next on the agenda will be proof of the minutes.
So moved.
February the fifth, February the fourteenth.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Parrish. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously. Next on the agenda will be public comments and...
Before we start, public comments, Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
So a few items to clear up here. First, if everybody hasn't seen it yet, anybody planning on speaking in public comments, there's now a clock on the wall. That clock will time you. You have three minutes as it states in the agenda. If you hear solo or five minutes if you represent a faction or company or group of some sort. If you speak for five minutes representing that group, no one else from that group could stand up and speak, you know, representing that same group here. So that will help hopefully, and it will count up, not down. So that will help hopefully in everyone so there's no misunderstandings at a podium when the chairman has to let you know that your time is up, thinking that you've been rudely interrupted. We're going based on the clock. That's number one. Number two, as you can see, we have three different public hearings here today. The public hearings, Commissioners, anyone that wants to speak about the public hearings, they're welcome to speak on the public comments, but I just need to let everyone know there's also an opportunity during the public hearing for them to speak to that specific item. So it's up to the person. I just wanted to make sure that they speak where they feel their voice is mostly heard and understanding for that specific item.
You know, may I say one thought as we're on the subject of time clocks and so on? You just said an operative word that the public has an opportunity also to specifically talk during the public hearing on that specific subject. Do you think we could consider as a commission, now that we have a time clock, that perhaps we allow the public to speak specifically on agenda items, limited to some number on that clock now that we see something more organized? It also allows county staff to speak specifically on an agenda item. And that's just a discussion. I'd like your thoughts on it. You know the history of why we have public comment first at every meeting, but I'm just wondering if we've matured enough in our clocking and all of our thinking that we would be benefited by having the public able to speak on specific agenda items and not double public comment and the agenda item, but come for the agenda item or the public comment. And you guys probably know the history of why we have public comments and nothing else after that?
We got to think about that.
Think about it? Okay.
Yeah, I got to get in more detail on...
Okay. All right, I just wanted to bring that up as a conversation and just get educated and thought about it. Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda will be public comment. Would you let the lady from the public, public here come first?
Okay.
From the, yeah. Come in.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is DT Simmons. I'm the Public Information Officer of the Florida Department of Health in Franklin County. I'm here accompanied with Emerald Larkin, who is one of our wonderful dedicated nurses and our partners from Weems Hospital as well. We wanted to just give you a very brief update on the situation of coronavirus in the state of Florida, also known as COVID-19. A press release was released the other night, Sunday night, from the Florida Department of Health's Office of Communications. That press release did mention the two presumptive positive cases in Florida, one in Manatee County and the other in Hillsboro. This release was shared with you all, as well as our partners and our media and our residents and community at large. The Florida Department of Health in Franklin County, locally, we're actively engaged in enhanced surveillance for respiratory illnesses that may be COVID-19. And for more information, Emerald will give you an update on our efforts locally and what we've been doing recently.
Thank you, DT. Good morning, Commissioners. So last week...
Let me get your name for the record, please.
Emerald, sorry. Emerald Larkin.
Thank you.
Last week, we met with our hospital partners, including David Walker, the CEO of Weems, as well as some of his staff, to discuss strategies and share the latest healthcare guidance. We continue to make sure that all of our healthcare partners have the latest information available to respond timely. And the best way to prevent illness is to avoid being exposed to the virus. As a reminder, the department always recommends everyday preventative actions to help impede the spread of respiratory diseases, and that includes avoiding close contact with people that are sick, staying home when you're sick, and avoiding contact with persons in poor health, avoiding touching your eyes, nose, mouth with unwashed hands, covering your cough or sneeze with a tissue, then disposing of the tissue, washing your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds, especially after going to the restroom, before eating, after blowing your nose, or coughing, or seizing. Now, if soap and water are not readily available, you can use an alcohol-based hand sanitizer, but it must have at least 60% alcohol content. And you always wash your hands with soap and water, of course, if your hands are visibly dirty. And cleaning and disinfecting frequently touched objects and surfaces using a regular household cleaning spray or wipe. The CDC does not recommend that asymptomatic or healthy people wear a face mask to protect themselves from respiratory diseases, including COVID-19. Face masks should be used by people who show symptoms of COVID-19 to help prevent the spread of diseases to others. The use of face masks is also crucial for healthcare workers and people who are taking care of someone in a close setting, such as at home or in a healthcare facility. And a person that experiences a fever or symptoms of a respiratory illness, such as fever, cough, shortness of breath, within 14 days after travel from China, Italy, Iran, South Korea, Japan, or any other destination, under the CDC Travel Advisory, should call ahead to their healthcare provider and their local county health department and mention their recent travel or close contact. If a person has had close contact with someone showing these symptoms who has recently traveled from this area or has been in contact with a person with laboratory confirmed COVID-19, they should call ahead to their healthcare professional and the county health department. The healthcare professional will work with the health department to determine if the person should be tested for COVID-19. As of today, there are no cases in Gulf or Franklin County. If residents have questions about COVID-19, they can reach the Franklin County Health Department at our phone number of 850-653-2111. And for additional information, you can also visit the Florida Department of Health website at floridahealth.gov, as well as the CDC's website at cdc.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that information.
You know, I got a phone call from Lori Hines yesterday morning. I think perhaps we all did and...
Yes, sir.
Very good.
And one of the neat things that she told me was that they're used to dealing with outbreaks all the time. This is something you don't hear in the media. And I thought that was very comforting to me, that this is not anything new and good standard operating procedure, and I appreciate you guys.
Any other Commissioner got anything to ask? Okay, next will be public comment.
All right, I'm Grayson Shepherd. I'm the president of the Apalachicola Artificial Reef Association. I just wanted to give you guys a quick update on our progress on that. You guys are familiar with the name Ben Withers, contractor from Carabel, built a lot of houses on Dog Island. Ben Withers passed away, and his estate is donating the little barge and tugboat that they used to, or the organization of Artificial Reefs in Tallahassee. Ward does not have a site suitable for those two vessels, and we do. Our Buddy Ward Memorial Reef meets the requirements for that. So I've been in touch with a marine contractor from Fort St. Joe, Colleen Marine is name, and they are willing to donate their time and material to deploy this free barge and tugboat. It has to be cleaned and prepared, it has to be anchored, and things like that, so this will be down the road, but I just wanted to let you guys know that we are moving forward with putting things underwater on our reef. So it's exciting news, and it's supposedly not going to cost us anything. So I'll keep you guys abreast of what's going on with that and periodic updates like this. Also, we have applied for the FWC Artificial Reef Grant for this cycle, $60,000. It will be a reimbursement grant, so it won't be available until 2021, but we're applying for it now, but we'll cross that bridge. We're going to have to come up with some money to do that, but we get reimbursed for it. So again, I'll keep you guys abreast of that as we move forward. But that's it. I just wanted to get up here and let you guys know that we are working on getting that reef filled. So if you have any questions, let me know. If not, I'm going to get on out of here and go to work.
And a question?
Yeah, Mrs. Withers lives in my district. His mom, she's still alive and very giving family.
Yep, exactly. And Lisa Withers is his widow and graciously donating this material. I mean, it's got some value to it. One of her requests is that we do name it the Ben Withers Memorial Reef. It'll be inside the Buddy Ward, but it will be known as the Ben Withers Reef. It'll show up on maps and things like that, so.
That's great.
It's a 60-foot barge, 60 feet long. It's 24 feet long. It's roughly the size of this room.
Wow.
So it's impressive. It's going to be really neat. It's going to hold fish, and we'll all get a chance to go out there and fish on it. So that's it, you guys. Thank you.
Do you know when you're going to sink it?
Oh, do we know? Not specifically. The contractor is supposed to go over mid-March to pick it up, to take it over to his place over in St. Joe where they can clean it and get the anchors attached to it and whatnot, so. Before the summer, sometime later on this spring. And like I said, once I know, a hard date or whatever, I'll let you guys know. We'll definitely have David there to take pictures and whatnot, because we'll try to make a big deal out of it just to get some PR and get our ball rolling.
I got a question. Once you sink a boat like that, or sink your, whatever your other stuff you sink, how long it take before the fish be, or do you really know?
30 minutes.
And they be ready?
Seriously. The fish, you know, they're out there swimming around. As soon as there's something on the bottom, they start coming to it. The little barnacles start growing immediately, the little fish, you know, there's schools of bait balls that move around. They find it, they stay there. King mackerel will be there, flounder are all out there moving around anyway. They'll be drawn to it. We expect there'll be grouper, snapper, grunts, flounder, black sea bass. I mean, just king mackerel, it's going to be crazy.
So the same...
And it's just right there outside the cut.
So the same day you sink it, it'd be good to go for fish?
Absolutely. Seriously. I know, they've got proof. They've got pictures where they drop stuff. I mean, the bubbles are still coming off of it, and fish start moving in. So it's going to be exciting.
Thank you.
All right. Watching my clock.
All right. Have a happy time.
Public comments?
Alan Pfeifer, Concerned Citizens, Franklin County. First time on the clock, I like that. Today, I'm going to have about a little trip down memory lane. There's been a lot said about our commitment to fulfilling our promises with the Weems Hospital renovation and rebuilding. These are the minutes of your meeting of July 3, 2007. I'm going to read excerpts because I don't have enough time to read all of the minutes. Commissioner Lockley voiced his support of a large professional company owning the hospital and stated that the sales tax would help with that idea. Mrs. Johnson, clerk of court, read the following statement on March 6, 2007. Mrs. Gail Godd, representing the hospital board, advised you, "The hospital board is interested in purchasing property owned by Mr. Roy Solomon. She also requested you approve the hospital board's recommendation to allow Mr. Chuck Culvert to serve as CFO in addition to a CEO with an additional salary to be negotiated later." Keep in mind, Ms. Dodds made all her announcements during the month of March. I came before this board on April 17, 2007, to make you aware the hospital had more expenditures for the month of March than revenues. At your next meeting on May 1, 2007, a hospital board representative and Chuck Culvert were present, and they reported on the status of the hospital, assuring you, "My concerns were unfounded. I find it ironic that a month later we are in financial crisis." Either your hospital board doesn't know or weren't provided reliable information from hospital staff, or they don't make you aware of the financial situation. The hospital board and CFO were put in place for oversight for the county, not to keep the information from us. We've put $2.7 million into the hospital since the county assumed the operation. There are minutes that show you were told the county would be repaid money once Medicare payments were received, and that has never occurred. I speak to you as our financial officer. I didn't want to get into this crisis when we were felt to compel without timely consideration of all the factors, and that exactly is what has happened. Commissioner Parrish stated that without a long-range plan for healthcare, it would be too soon for the citizens to vote on this issue, but for the sake of keeping the hospital open, the sales tax is needed now. Paul Rigemeyer supported Commissioner Parrish's comments on developing a clear vision on healthcare and was also in favor of workshops to inform the public, clear up options and choices on the ballot and town hall meetings in each district. Attorney Schuler reminded the board that a decision must be made by November 18, 2007, to have the sales tax implemented by January 2008. The board meeting on 7/3/07, page 9 of 13, Commissioner Lockley reminded the board that the information you were seeking was already researched by the Health Committee last year. Attorney Schuler said there were other issues to consider. Mayor Kelly, the city of Carabel, inquiring about a previous sales tax discussion, in motion, and discussed the city of Carabel's option not to agree to their interlocal regarding the sales tax. Attorney Schuler stated that the city of Carabel would have the option to keep their percent of the sales tax, depending on what option the board agrees to. Motion by Putnell, seconded by Sanders, directing Attorney Schuler in the supervisor election to proceed with scheduling a special, non-binding election in October for a sales tax and direct the hospital board to approach both the city of Apalachicola and city of Carabel about an interlocal. Gentlemen, the promises that were made almost 13 years ago are substantially different than what's on the table today. 13 years ago, you presented, not you presented, but it was presented to the existing county Board of Commissioners, a 31,000-square-foot, two-story, full-service hospital. That is, when you talk about, "We promise the people," you promised the people that. In the city of Carabel, you promised them a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week urgent care facility with a doctor. You have not delivered on that promise either. The reality is that you can't fulfill all these promises and that we need to bring this back to the people with what we know today and provide a reasonable, measured response to the conditions that exist today and not 13 years ago. We're still in the same, more or less, financial condition that we were 13 years ago, even though today we have a spigot of over $2.25 million coming in, and yet we still have these financial issues. Many people in the public...
Time up, sir.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Public comments?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Candace Millender. I'm here to speak to you about my road, Buck Road in East Point. We have been, I've been living on my road for 11 years. No help from anyone. The owner of the road, the person who is in charge of the estate from Mr. Ben Watkins after he passed, has not helped. He refused to be here today. He's refused to take our calls. We can't get anybody to help us. Our previous commissioner, Bevan Putnell, was just nonchalant, never wanted to help us. So I have several issues that fall on the county that I fill. So my road comes off of Ridge Road, and there's a ditch that runs along Ridge Road, but it turns directly into my road. It doesn't go through the culvert. It turns directly, washes our road out. After the fire and after the storm, not sure who was in charge, maybe the power company, had the people come in to trim the treetops. Well, they didn't clean it up. They just trimmed the trees, and now we have half trees just filling our ditch up. There's nowhere for the water to drain. It ends at my yard. And then after the fire, there was a fire trail cut through a vacant acre of land between me and my next neighbor. And that fire trail now runs from Ridge Road all the way through and ends at my yard, and it fills up with water. There's nowhere, the ditch does not run through to the forest, to Bear Creek Road or anything. We would like our ditches to be cleaned out. Our road is so bad right now that the holes are literally the width of the road and the length of two vehicles, full-size vehicles. And it's like going through the mud bog when you have to leave, and it's just, it's hard on our vehicles. We need an emergency fix. It's almost impossible for emergency services to go down our road. We wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to get to the end, and I'm at the end. So I would like some help from the county, or if the county can do anything to push Steve Watkins to fix our road. He refuses to speak to any of us, so I don't know if there is anything that the county can do. Send him a certified letter of some sort to let him know that he's responsible. I have the property appraiser information right here saying that Ben Watkins is still the landowner of the vacant land and the road that we live on. So he is in charge of that estate, as far as I know. I don't know why we can't get him to fix the road, but if the county could help, the county could, you know, do an emergency fix. That way, we're able to be able to come and go and not have to tear our cars half apart. I also requested that the county fix the right-of-way, and they came and put a few shovel loads of half of the entrance of our road.
Time up, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Schuler, could you give a short answer?
Well, it's a terribly sad situation, but it is also not a responsibility of the county. This is a private road owned by a private individual. The county cannot put its public equipment on private property. There was a time, as I've mentioned to you before, where the county was considering, because if you're going to do for one, you got to do for everybody in the county, and the county went through a process of its due diligence to investigate the cost of taking over all of these private roads countywide. Before we even got to the issue of how to manage the stormwater, which is one of the issues this young lady is talking about, we were in excess of $5 million to the county to take over. That's my recollection. We can go back and check the records, see what the record says. But bottom line is, we could not afford to take over in any kind of a programmatic fashion these private roads, and so it has continued to be a private matter between, in this case, the lot owners and then the person who sold the lots to them. I mean, it's really a matter of...
Well, he's dead.
If they're loggerheads, they need to go to court. Mr. Chairman, let the judge resolve it. There's nothing really that the county can do.
I don't know why we couldn't give them all of a one-time fix in the county. I mean, they pay taxes.
I sure do.
I mean, I'm down there with the county, they can't even get in and out. It's terrible.
Public comment? Public comment? Next on the agenda will be Department Director of Public Works, Mr. Howard Neves.
Good morning, Commissioners. How y'all doing?
Good morning.
We got, been grading roads, which we started yesterday. I know last meeting, we were going to try to grade, but we're getting rain every week, so everything's been real wet. But we got alligator point, we on island today, and hopefully move into Carabel and Appalachia. We've got a bunch more rain supposed to be coming also, which tomorrow and Thursday. So we're going to get what we can get. We've been cleaning the back pass, sidewalks, doing all the edging through the county. Spoil site that we got that we've been working on, we had a breakdown, we hadn't got it finished, but we got the machine fixed, so we tried to get it back over and finally finish it up. And one more thing I got, I got a, I've had an equipment operator position open, and I'd like for the board approval to change that for inmate supervisor.
So moved.
I talked to the prison, and they said that they probably could get me another crew, but there will be not, no state offers coming out at this time. So we got grass season coming up, so we need as many inmates as we could get, so.
Okay, what, I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masters.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Jones, then Commissioner Burke. Discussion, oh, what you going to do about your operator?
We, well, we got, some of them just going to have to move up.
Oh.
We got some number one operator, you know, two and three. I got, well, I got myself, and you got Mitch, and Miles, Danny, Joe, Timmy Lee, so some of them just going to have to step up a little bit and learn how to run some of the other equipment.
Okay. All righty, so y'all ready to vote on them?
I have another question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Howard, you say moving up from operator one to two to three, is that going to be at a cost to the county?
It never has been, so they, it never has been. Through the past, they've got nothing for them, so.
Okay.
Anybody here?
Michael, item number 15 on your report, would it be appropriate to...
I was waiting for the motion.
Do that. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously. Pete, you wanted to do something, Mike?
Yes, sir. If Howard is standing up, that's it.
Yeah.
Actually, Commissioner, I'm going to address, good morning, good morning again. I'm going to address two items. Item 14 first, and then we'll go to item 15. At your last meeting, I was directed by the board to contact FDOT regarding the number of dead trees in the county along Highway 98. The local FDOT representative explained that the state has actively been removing dead trees from the state's right-of-way along Highway 98. He further explained that some of the dead trees may appear to be on the state right-of-way but are actually on private property. The representative suggests that Mr. Neighbors compile a list of trees and their locations, he would input from the board, of course, and then contact him so Benny and the representative, FDOT representative, and Howard could go over that list, go over the locations, and determine which ones are actually on the county's right-of-way versus which ones, I'm sorry, which ones are on the state right-of-way versus which ones are on private property. And so I just, I would say myself and Howard just need some direction on that proposal.
Ladies and gentlemen, vote on that.
Mr. Chairman? Michael, if some of these trees are on private property, are they responsible if they fall across the highway and kill somebody?
That would take a lawsuit to figure that one out, Commissioner.
But some of these people, if it's on, when you're making your inventory, Howard riding through and looking, if they're on, I'll use St. Joe for example, because I know west of Apalachicola, there's some trees that may be on some of St. Joe's property. Can we notify these people, let them know that there's a potential liability issue there?
Sure.
Because as, as we just talked about, the young lady's road, we can't take public equipment and go on private property. That's their responsibility. And the way the hurricane would obviously come from the south to the north, all these trees, a lot of the trees on the south side of 98 are leaning towards the highway.
They are.
And I think we should notify these property owners, if they're on private property, that there's potentially a liability issue there. And maybe they can get somebody on their side to cut some of their stuff down to limit their liabilities.
Okay.
And thereby keeping people from getting hurt when dead trees start falling because of good wind.
Especially in East Point, right? That's an accident waiting to happen.
Along the highway there?
Right, there's probably 20, 25, but just one spot, big trees. And I think somebody said, no, it ain't state, it's on private property, but it's on the edge of the water, but that tree need to come down.
Yeah, I mean, so we need to address the issue before somebody gets severely injured. And I think... And I think from our standpoint, from our, we know about it. We need to take action of some sort so that we got a record showing that we tried to have these people with this private property remove these trees before. I think that's part of our job.
Okay.
So, when you're making your inventory, Howard, try to know exactly where these things are, and just try to find the property owners if possible.
I need it.
Through the tax appraiser's office and find out who owns the property, and then notify, I think county staff needs to notify them with a letter or something. You may have to get the attorney to help you with that, Mr. Chairman.
Let me get a motion on that, 'cause we are having on the record.
I'll put that in a form of a motion.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Paris, second by Commissioner Jones. That way, we discussing, we are having on record that we, we did something about it. If some, I pray to God nothing don't happen, but if something occurs, we'll let them retry it.
And just another thought, could we consider also having your counterpart, the state official, go with you as you're doing these inventories? Simultaneously, you guys together do it, so that you can come to decisions right on sight.
Well, it's not the state, it's Transfield, whoever took Transfield, Othusion, or whatever it is.
I thought it was for Ovial or something to that effect, but Benny, yeah, same people, it'd be Benny, and basically, yeah. What Benny's asking, I don't wanna say his name publicly, what he was asking is that you guys get with Howard, compile a list, and then him and Howard ride around and look at those trees and then make decisions.
That's the same thing.
So, yes, same thing, sir.
Howard, we got that one west of the lighthouse, you know, that right on side, wrote our piece of property that belonged to a man donated, we gotta get that tree there 'cause this fixing to fall down.
And if you don't get over it, you hold on a piece of equipment on a low board and knock the windows out.
Yep.
It's hanging that low.
Yeah, then the one just aside us on our property that guy donated in nineteen eighty-five to the county. It's a big, and it's fixing to fall.
And we had one tree right at two mile, last little bad weather we had, it was fixing to fall, but I think Fairail Service got, Timmy Butler or Jason White, they got it cut down, so they took care of that one.
Alright. Y'all ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? That pass is unanimous.
I have one more item, item fifteen, also applies to Howard. So, Commissioner Bolt asked that I contact FDOT about adding signage at the end of Highway ninety-eight in the consolidated school in East Point, that T intersection in East Point. He felt without additional signage, there would be a strong possibility of someone leaving the school at night, being unfamiliar with the area, then driving directly across Highway ninety-eight and into the water. FDOT has installed signage on the south side of Highway ninety-eight to warn any motorists exiting the school to turn left or right. However, FDOT also suggests that installation of an oversized stop sign on a stop ahead sign on the school's exit road, not sure what that road is called, which I've included-
Seahawk Drive.
Seahawk Drive, okay, which I've included in your agenda packet, the pictures of FDOT's recommendation. Would the board consider ordering the signs and having the county road department install the signs if this superintendent is agreeable? I need board action for both. It's just two signs to the very end of the road. One, warning you of the stop sign, and the other's the actual oversized stop sign.
She'll move.
With the lights, the reflector will pick up.
Yeah, we got some older than the big reflector.
Yeah, the big one, yeah. And they have the specifications, I'll send them to you.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Burke, second by Commissioner Mast.
Just a comment, if I could. Thank you. You know, there's a option on some of these very critical stop signs, and maybe this is overkill, just give me feedback on this, that the stop sign has a circumference of flashing lights around it. Maybe this is powered by solar or something, but it's very, very clear to the arriving car, stop, stop, stop. Is that appropriate to consider at this point? And then a follow-up is, should we, realizing how close it is to the water, should we ask the state to consider adding guardrails, say at a hundred-foot centers right there at that Seahawk Drive? Two points. Flashings on?
Here's my thought on that. Since the Egress and Ingress are both the same road, I think an oversized stop sign should be just fine. They're having to come in that way, and they're coming out the same way.
Well, you got speed limit on it, too, fifteen.
Yeah, fifteen miles an hour. If they're doing the speed limit, it shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
And Commissioner, when I made the original request, it was for the directional sign to turn left, right, and the guardrails. FDOT decided just to put up the sign. So, I did make that request already.
Okay. Since they were silent on the guardrails, does that mean no, or should we remind them to think about it?
I could send them another letter. I can ask them.
Is that okay with you guys, do that?
Yeah, but they said no.
By doing nothing, is that what?
They said they wasn't gonna put the guardrails up, it was too much money to put the guardrails up. They put a sign, as Mr. Jones said, they said they know they're going in and they're coming out, so the sign supposed to prevent that happening.
Let me ask you a question, but before we do all this, did we get permission from the school to?
I will. I'll seek permission. That's what I, I just wanted to make sure you guys were even interested in doing this for us, and not pass it off to the school before I approach the superintendent. I don't think she'll have a problem with it, but, you know.
Would she have a problem with getting our money back?
For the installation?
Yeah, the signs and the stuff.
Well, that's what I was asking you guys, if we just go ahead and pay for it, just install it with your county staff.
Okay. Okay. Just thought. I mean, we gonna help the kids too, but we don't wanna overvote. Y'all ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? That pass unanimous.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you.
I got one more thing. On our place where we gonna put our new office, we got all the trees dug up, we're working on that, we're gonna clear everything up and have it all ready. And I think either March or April, I think we supposed to have another meeting on that, so maybe we can get that building started, you know, quick as possible, so.
Isn't that bid supposed to be turned in in April?
I think so.
Yes.
We got one more meeting, I think, he's supposed to come back to the shop, and then we can go from there. But whatever they need, if they can survey it out, market, fill in, or whatever, we can go and get started on that, get going on it.
But you have a cement foundation?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think that's what's in the bid concrete.
Okay.
I know, it's something I got. Well, I was riding the night, Buster, to the store, I G eight. And I know it's in the city limit, but out there on ninety-eight, and you go down past twenty-four, all that is, it's got dark out there. It's been dark since then, so I don't know whether the-
I think they had some lights, I think at one time, I don't know, that stuff probably got blowed away and-
Yeah, they got lights out there, but they not working. And it's real dark in that area, it's a safety issue. But it's right past, it's right twenty-four.
Between twenty-four.
When you're on ninety-eight, when you hit that area by Dr. Knicker's old house, on down to the I G eight right there.
I'll check it out, see if we got lights, or maybe the lights are blurred, or the whole poles is gone, but we're looking, and I get back up with Michael on it and see if they can get up with somebody to fix it.
And on that other issue that young lady was talking about, I should've done this in Commissioner comment, but since she's here, I'm gonna act. Do the board think? I'm just a thought, can we put in for some BP money or something to address that, all them problems over there with these private roads? What the boards think about that?
I think he, I wanna say four. Four private roads, I think, and maybe five through the county that we got. Which they all, they all bad, people call, complain a lot about them, but being private roads, you know.
Do that, what I'm asking, do that. Do something like that count? Will that count for BP money?
For BP money?
Yeah, I mean, you know.
I don't think so. I mean, not on private property, repair private roads, but that's more of a Mr. Pierce question.
Yeah, that's what I was-
I was gonna say, if you would give me the opportunity to address both, 'cause both Pam and Nora Allen is here today, I would like to address them, and that question, maybe we get back to you, sir.
Yeah, but, yeah, get with them and, just a thought, I, I mean-
And see, besides BPC Watt, if there's any funding available anywhere to do something like that, okay.
I know the county, we can't do it, but is there anything out there to help the people?
Yeah, we need to talk to half them.
Yep, that's good. It goes public that we're gonna try to help them, that's good.
Okay. Alright, anybody got anything? What, you got something else?
No, sir, that's all I got, man.
Anybody else got anything for Mr. Neighbors? Keep up the good work.
Yes, sir.
Next on the agenda will be Solid Waste Director, Mr. Funny Davis.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What I do have, this is a test in my report, no board action, just some information for you all about the recycling, and also the fleet, list of my fleet. Just if y'all will take time to look at, look at it, the both of them, for some of the people that don't understand what's going on with the recycle, if you could share that with them. Alright, and also, I'd like to let you know that, once again, the ball feel lights are from Monday through Thursday, right now, from six to eight-thirty. I have been getting some complaints, concerns about leaving them on all week at that time, which we do plan to move up the lights to when the season gets started. Right now, we have kids that goes out and practice, some on the weekends. But we do not have staff to make sure the lights are off. We can set them from Monday through, Sunday through Saturday, Sunday through Saturday, six to eight-thirty. So, whatever you desire.
You got them on a timer right now?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Agreed.
The time changes Sunday. So, we're gonna have to readdress that.
Yes, correct.
As to when they come on and when they go off. Myself, I don't really feel like those kids need to be out there past nine o'clock at night, when they got school the next day. And of course, it's gonna start getting dark around eight-thirty, so we need to make adjustments to that. And let everybody know, that all the coaches know exactly when they're gonna come on and when they're gonna go off. But we definitely want to readdress that after Sunday when the time changes to redo that. On another issue, on this recycling, getting a lot of phone calls and a lot of comments and about recycling, but then when you start researching, there's many articles in, you know, on the internet and other places where recycling is an issue across the country.
Correct.
Of course, we're dealing with Franklin County, and I hear it every day, especially the businesses in downtown Appalachia and other places that don't have the ability to recycle anymore. But I don't think they understand that this is a occurring problem across the country. It's not just here in Franklin County where we have suspended recycling, it's happening all over the country, as you know, you've probably read the report-
Yes.
And some of the articles. You know, as I actually sent Mike one of the articles, so he could disperse it to the other commissioners about what the country's facing when China refused to accept any more recyclable products. So, it's just an issue, it's not just Franklin County that's having an issue with these recycling. You know, and, you know, we may need to run an ad in the newspaper referencing some of these links that different people can go to, to see some of these articles that are coming from across the country, to let them know recycling is not just our problem, it's a problem for the whole country, you know? To make them more aware, because they having, the commission and they having yourself as far as it relates to recycling and why Franklin County is. We're one of the last to suspend recycling.
That's right.
You know, you wanna recycle, and these articles reference all this, you know, you wanna recycle, you wanna do the right thing, you wanna keep yourself out of the landfills, but when you ain't got anywhere to take this stuff to a marketable, there's no marketable solution, then it ultimately goes in the landfill. And it's not just us, it's all across the country, so.
Yes, you're correct, Commissioner, but it's not going in, and not the same cell, but it's not going in our landfill.
Right.
It's actually being hauled out. Any Class One garbage, household paper bottles, that's being hauled out, that goes to our transfer station and then hauled to Jackson County. So, being close to the bay, we, it's not affecting us.
Right, but saying that, these landfills that we're transferring to are eventually gonna be overcome with all this stuff.
Yes.
So, it is gonna be a problem in the future as to whether these landfills that we're transferring to are actually gonna keep accepting this stuff. So, you know, I don't know what the solution is, and it don't sound like anybody else in the country. There's one article that states that the people that are making plastic and putting products inside plastic containers, they're wanting those companies to pay for the recycling of those plastics.
That's correct.
Bottles, you know, and that's a, I don't know how that's gonna work, but that, one article specifically relates to that, is making the people that make the products actually pay for the recycle. There is no recycle, I mean, there's nowhere to take these products, but they are trying to get money out of the companies that produce and package in these plastics and all to actually offset the costs of what do you do with it, so.
Right.
Y'all down south have backed up, Miami, all Fort Lauderdale, they backed up.
You know, the state, the state had to make that decision, really. That's what it boiled down to, is the state legislator, governor, and all them would have to make that decision. But they don't wanna do it 'cause them same people with them plastic company, again, them are donating to their dang own campaign, so.
One article actually referenced four hundred thousand tons of plastic that they just throw on the grounds of their landfill, 'cause they had nowhere to put it. That's a lot of plastic.
Yes.
We don't have the ability to do that either.
Commissioner, what I actually did is the article you sent me, I added it to Founder's Report, so there are actually links on, if you use the county's website to get your agenda, there are links to both articles right there. But I think even as we go beyond, and I'm sure someone corrected me if I'm wrong, and they always do, but the board is also looking at this from a budgetary or financial aspect. If you already paid for Waste Pro, whomever, to come and pick up your household garbage, why are we using extra tax dollars to pay for equipment and containers to haul the recyclables that's going to end up in the same transfer station that's going to go out there anyway, and it's not solving, you're not making a difference? I guess that's how I was looking at it, what the board was actually also trying to do, save the taxpayers money by saying, look, it makes sense to separate it because it's not going anywhere different, so if you already have your haul, you pay for it out of your pocket, why would we charge you a tax base, increase the tax revenue to do that? I mean, I thought that's what you were also addressing Commissioner Paris the last time.
Exactly, and one of these articles also referenced the manpower it takes, 'cause if you don't recycle properly, then you have to go, it's considered contaminated, then you have to go through by hand and separate your products in order to be able to recycle. And then nobody wants recyclable product, so, you know, as you said, it just adds more cost to it, when you have to go by hand and go through these contaminated recycling bins that are, that are not put in a proper place, and then when you, if you had it all, it all worked perfect, there's still nothing to do with it. And it's not just here, it's across the country.
Yeah, and Commissioner, you spoke on behalf of the businesses concerned about the recycle. The cardboard is marketable to the extent, twenty-five dollars, it's seventy-five dollars a ton right now. In the summertime, they get up to a hundred and twenty-five dollars a ton. But even at that, right now, if you will make a visit to the landfill, you'll see the stop, the pile, the stop pile that we have, and it's getting rained on. So, eventually, it's gonna wind up in the garbage. Because, I mean, a little rain, they take out moisture, they duck the moisture rate for it, but when the bill is just falling apart, they don't want you to accept it at all. So, there you go again, I mean, we leaving the cardboard bins out for right now, unless you tell me different. But a lot of, you know, we are getting some good clean cardboard, but getting rid of it is the point.
And the businesses down, like downtown here in Appalachia I was referring to, some of them have told me that we'll get a dumpster, but we don't have no place to put the dumpster.
That's right.
You know, we tried, we tried this once before and put it down the road, and next thing you know, it's full of TVs, couches, everything else thrown out, and we had to remove those, those bins, recycling bin, and one of the companies here in downtown had a dumpster down there. had a dumpster down there. But what it, what it relates to is like at my business, there ain't no dumpsters downtown, and ain't no recycling going on, so they fill my dumpster up at eleven, twelve, one o'clock in the morning, you know, and then I come to work on Monday, my dumpster running over on the ground, because everybody's using my dumpster, 'cause they don't have a dumpster nowhere down there, you know, so it's, it's just an issue all the way around.
Right.
Some of them said they wanted a dumpster, but they had no place to put a dumpster. You can't put it on the street, you can't put it on, up next to the building, so, you know, the way the old town's laid out, there ain't a whole lot of options you got there.
Right.
But I, I've definitely been hearing, that's the reason I want to discuss this this morning, because I've definitely been hearing it, but I've also been reading these articles on the recycling, which, you know, we're getting burned up on Facebook and other social media sites about how sorry the county is. Well, we're the last one to suspend recycling.
Exactly.
Because we've heard from the people for the last three or four years, we've been saying it's an issue, but there's no res, you know, there's no resolution to figure out what to do, and I think, you know, we just got to move forward, and maybe something will show up that we can start, you know, start redoing the recycling, but like I said before, it's not just our issue, it's the issue across the country.
But you know what? If they add three cents to each one of these bottles, three to five cents, for each one of these bottles, it'll take care of it, but they don't wanna add it.
Mr. Chairman. I wanted to remember that in one of our meetings, we stated publicly that we were going to temporarily suspend recycling, and I want to be sure we emphasize that adjective temporarily, we're not suspending recycling here officially in Franklin County, we're timing out in order to study the process, and I believe we're looking at a potential of modern mobile recycling product, perhaps beginning next year, that might help relieve some of these issues you're talking about.
And the other thing that get, take care of some of this, you add three cents to that, and you make a mandatory trash pickup and everything all over the county.
Mrs. Fonda.
And that'll stop all that, some of it.
It'll help.
It'll help, but long we ain't got it, we don't have the problem.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, also, on, on top of, yeah, and I, I get what Commissioner Perry is saying, 'cause I've had similar discussions, and that's fine, they're all valid, and not to belabor the point too much, but I think it's more prudent for us as a governing body in the county to just be honest with the citizens. And if there's no market for the recyclables, we're not getting anything out of it, it's eventually going to the dump anyway, or being transferred to where all of our stuff's going, we should not continue to perpetuate an untruth that we're recycling when we're actually not. And again, we, we're looking at an aged fleet for recycling, and I think it would be very unwise of us as a governing body with taxpayer dollars, 'cause again, nothing's government-funded, it's all taxpayer-funded, for us to re-up that fleet when it's all going to Jackson County anyway, that's, that just don't make no sense to me, so, that's just my addition to what Commissioner Perry said.
So do you think it's appropriate to just consider only, consider and not move on it, potentially mandatory garbage and trash pickup uniformly across the entire county, and only consider it? Is that appropriate at this point?
I think so.
Just develop a white paper, have a public discussion, and just think about it.
Let me, let me, we've looked at this before.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Go ahead.
And, and the way mandatory garbage works in the city of Appalachia, they have mandatory garbage pickup, but they also have water and sewer, so they add your garbage to that water and sewer bill, so you don't pay your sewer, or I want water this month, so I pay my water, it's all added together. The county does not have that ability. So these companies, whether, and I'm not gonna call the name of the, of the waste companies, we all know who they are, but they don't, they won't bill each individual in this county for a garbage bill. They bill this county, this county has to pay the garbage bill, and then it's up to this county to try to figure out how you gonna get your money back. It doesn't work like it does in the city of Appalachia or the city of Carrickville, because we don't control water and sewer, so we have no mechanism to get our money, taxpayers' money, back. So if somebody don't pay their garbage bill, or hundreds, maybe thousands, don't pay their garbage bill, this county has to pay. That's, that's where the issue starts.
I see that point, so is there?
In other words, I don't wanna pay for hundreds, possibly thousands, of other people's garbage bill.
Sure.
Because they won't pay it, because the county is billed for it, then you gotta come up with the revenue to pay this garbage bill, and if they don't pay you, so be it.
I like your reality about that, so I'm wondering, is it potentially, we, we talked to these garbage collecting vendors and asked them to reconsider countywide.
They're not gonna sit out, they're not gonna sit there and send out eight thousand garbage bills, or ten thousand garbage bills, and hope they get their money. They've already been here. We'll bill the county, and the county figures out how to get their money back.
But the potential of business in the county, do you think that might offset your concern? That they, we want your business so badly that we'll bill the customer, 'cause we wanna be in Franklin County?
You can try, but I'm not, I'm not for the county paying the garbage bills.
Yes.
Well.
I see.
That, that they don't pay, and that raises your taxes.
Yeah.
Mr. Lockley, it raises everybody's taxes to pay the garbage bills for these people that are not gonna pay.
Yes.
But if you make it mandatory, then these companies will come in and get it, but they just wanna bill the county one bill each month, or whatever, and then the county has to figure out how to get their money back.
And so, and, and taking that, don't we then say to the vendor, you bill the customer, we're giving you county permission to come and take all the garbage of our county, you take full responsibility as a flat rate, you bill the customer, and the county doesn't get involved at all?
Yeah, we can do that.
Would that help your concern?
Yeah, it'll help.
You said they won't do it. Have we officially said and got a no yet from them?
Absolutely. Absolutely, yes, we have.
What we got to do is, if they, the ones who doing it now don't wanna do it, go out for bids, somebody'll do it. They got more, we got more company than the one.
That's true. There's, there's a lot of vendors that might enjoy Franklin County.
Just tell them, just tell them what we want on the bid. We can do it that way.
No, I like your idea, protect the county on paying somebody else's bill like that, but get that vendor who might enjoy the entire geography of the county to pick up garbage and do it, just like a, a utility company would do it. There's gotta be vendors in the country that think about that that way.
It's not the, it's not the kind of responsibility. If we put mandatory to collect for them, county don't pick up the garbage, they the ones figure it out, they the ones to collect their money.
And you can't make the cities use whoever, they gonna use whoever they want to, all we're gonna use is what we got.
Yeah, so if they don't wanna send out a bid, we get a couple.
Would you like for me to reach out to other garbage services and try to find out if they would entertain?
Sure, do a survey and a thought, yeah. You, you got our point.
I can do that.
Okay, that'd be great, just to see.
Fonda, why, why are you reaching out?
Yes, sir.
Reach out to the East Point Water and Sewer District, they can build their own customers, and to the Island Water District about billing their own customers.
Okay.
While we're reaching out.
Might be. They the ones who making the money.
That's all I have, Commissioner.
Anybody got anything else for Mr. Davis?
Unfortunately, I do.
Go ahead.
Uh, okay, item sixteen, uh, back to page six of my, my report. The last meeting, the board requested that I contact FDOT about piles of yard debris, trash, and sometimes construction debris left on Highway ninety-eight. Based on a conversation with the local FDOT contractor, that act of dumping on Highway ninety-eight is illegal. The representative told me that they questioned a few violators, and their response was, the county said to do this. My best guess is that some residents and property owners think that Hurricane Michael debris pickup program is still in effect, others have said it could be this policy of curbside pickup, we'll discuss that at some other time. The best way to com- combat this problem is to advertise, in my opinion, advertise that dumping on Highway ninety-eight and any other county roads that you want to determine is illegal. I would like the board to authorize Ms. Pam Brunel, Tress is here today, to use the Alert Franklin system to send that message out. I will also post this message on the website, if it becomes necessary, I will talk to the local radio station and the Times about advertising this message as a public service announcement. But I need action from the board to authorize Pam to use Alert Franklin system to advertise this illegal dumping message.
There's the board. So moved. Got a motion on the floor for our Commissioner. Master second by Commissioner Jones.
I have one comment, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Problem we're gonna have with advertising this is we're choosing one road, and we're telling them the rest of the roads are wide open, so that's the problem we're having.
Yeah. Unless we could just say dumping in all roads, then somebody's going to bring up, like, like I said, the curbside dumping, which I didn't want to get into this morning, we've been here long enough.
I'll leave it alone for now, then.
Mr. Chairman, the board several years back passed an ordinance that regulates and prohibits dumping on all of the county roads, we'll, we'll get that ordinance to Mr. Jones, he can include that in the message. And I think that should address the concern from Commissioner Jones, because that is a very valid point. Just say no dumping on one, they may think that all the other roads are wide open, wide open.
Mr. Chairman, I got a comment, too. Basically, a lot of stuff that is put on the side of, whether it's Highway ninety-eight or county roads, there's no traceability to it. Couches, mattresses, old boats, trailers, but there's no, no name assigned to that stuff. And if you go to the house, the pile is in front of this house, you go to that house, we didn't put that there. Somebody else come along in the middle of the night and put that trash on the side of the road. I mean, that's, how are we supposed to control Highway ninety-eight? Number one, that's the state highway system. Let them figure out how to control the trash on the side of the road, on ninety-eight, as Commissioner Jones said, county roads are a different issue, and we won't go there this morning. But there's no, I got places in my area right now that's got couches, mattresses, and none of them's got a name to it, so you can't find the rightful owner, so you don't know who put it there, so you can't charge nobody with illegal dumping. It's a major issue, just goes around in a big circle, and people don't, a lot of people don't put it in front of their house, they put it in a pickup truck and take it down the road and put it in front of somebody else's house. I've seen it happen.
They come from other counties, sir.
And it has come from other counties, as you know, 'cause I've called you on those issues, too.
Yes, sir.
Oh, so it, it's just a major issue, and I don't know what the simple solution's gonna be to it, 'cause nobody's gonna claim ownership of it, yeah, I put it there, go ahead and find me.
Yeah.
That ain't happening.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, it's just a major issue, and we can't put surveillance all over this county. You got twenty thousand cameras out there, and there still be spots that wouldn't be covered by a camera. I mean, you know what I'm saying, I mean, I don't know what the solution is to the problem.
Yeah. My only reason for advertising is that, you know, when they approach, the state actually, they were able to videotape a couple of people, and they approached them, and showed them the evidence, and they said, well, the county said I, I should do this, and I could do this. So my reason for the message, advertising the message, just to get the county out there, the county's telling you, you're wrong, don't do it, it's illegal, don't do it anymore.
Just make sure the message includes possible prosecution.
I will.
You know, so it kinda.
Is that an order?
Can you, can you tell me?
Kind of adds emphasis to if you're caught doing it, and you could possibly be prosecuted for illegal dumping.
Yep.
That needs to be included in the message, so we know.
For the possible reward.
Yeah.
That might work better, actually, 'cause if people see something, they will say something if they gonna get twenty dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I thought, can you tell me that the intention of Alert Franklin, is it, is it appropriate to put this notice on Alert Franklin when I'm thinking that it is about life and death issues? Should we be, and do we have any, you know, problem with the grant issues or anything?
Yeah, you can send out any kind of public message like that.
You can, okay.
Yeah, that was part of the whole grant with it, you can, it's mostly for life safety, but you can actually send out some other stuff like that.
Public service announcement.
Public service announcement, yes.
Okay, good. And Fonda, one more thing, do you think it's appropriate, and, and does this board think it's appropriate, maybe it's been done before, that for access, for getting rid of garbage and some, there are some people who just simply need men and heavy equipment to take care of it, and could the county do it? And we're paid by the property owner for that, they pay us in advance to come with our equipment and take care of that problem, is that appropriate?
I don't think it's legal.
You don't think it's legal, because it's all public equipment?
If you gonna do that, you gonna fix my road and my ditch.
Okay, I understand.
That falls in the same category as what we've talked about earlier.
Sound kind of thing, okay, I just want to make sure.
All righty. Ain't we got a motion on the floor?
Yeah, on number sixteen?
Y'all ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, they're passing now.
Thank you.
Good.
I'm good, Commissioner.
You're good?
Yeah.
Anybody else got anything for Mr. Davis?
Did you have something?
I didn't have a problem.
No problem.
The thing about it, when you, when you start doing stuff to help, and you no longer can do it, the people get mad, but hey, the good old boy days over, it's time to move on, do what we got to do.
Chairman, I have one more thing for Fonda before you leave.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I wasn't trying to cut you off. Fonda, thank you for everything y'all did with Resurfacing Basketball Forum in St. George Island, and I was gonna let you know that when you start to look at those goals, 'cause I don't know, but my son that plays basketball, he says that one goal's way higher than the other one, so as y'all start to look at it, if you need help, I had somebody publicly volunteer to help and have, you know what I mean? That's right. So if you, if you need that help, just reach out to me, I'll help you.
Oh, okay, all right. I'm reaching out to you.
I'll get it to you, I'll get it to you, thank you.
I need you.
Keep up the good work, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda will be emergency management director. Ms. Brunel, not him, but I see, uh, we got a representative. Ms. Tress.
Good morning, Commissioners, we don't have any action items, the only thing that we have is we went out for an RFP for construction contractors to do our hurricane loss mitigation program, it's a program that I've done probably for the last four years, and what it does is it, it can help wind retrofit people's homes and make it hardened, it's not a rehab, so I can't fix homes that are beyond just shutters and roofs and gable bracing. So we went out for bid, we got, I went out, I applied for the grant, got the grant, went out for bid, and now we need to open bids for the contractors.
There's the board.
To open it first, that's the second item right on the first, that's the opening of the bids, that you see there on the agenda?
Oh, okay.
Yes.
I thought she needed a move.
Mr. Chairman, I got something.
Who is it?
As you know, the CDBG disaster recovery DR monies are coming in, and I was reading them over with Mike yesterday, and it is, those monies can be used for mitigation, our local match to mitigation projects.
Correct.
Such as the one down at C thirty, where the road is washed out, and it's right up in, you know, undermining the road if we're getting those storms. So I wanna put that out there, that the CDBG monies can be used for our local twenty-five percent match, if we start doing mitigation proj- projects.
Correct, and I've, usually, every time we have houses that approach us, then I usually, like even the same thing with ship, they can use, be used as a match for ship, because it is a different program, so, I usually get with Deborah Belcher and ask her if she's got any on her list that she has that needs to, and I may actually reach out there, 'cause I need a few more houses.
What I'm mainly referring to is our FEMA projects.
I, I'm not sure, because they're.
Yes, these monies can be used as our local match into these big mitigation.
Okay.
Projects, and I want you to know that, so, like that project down on C thirty, where it's washed right up to the road, and the road's washed out, we're trying to get fixed for that, if we can get the mitigation approved, we can apply for some of these monies for our local twenty-five percent match.
Yeah, so we have a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars in that grant, so, and we were in approval to utilize it, and I try to use that or more, so, yeah.
Just making you aware.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Some of these county projects, such as St. George Island, the bathrooms there for mitigation need to be done there, these monies can be used to make our county match, the FEMA monies, to do these hazardous mitigation projects.
Yes.
Y'all use some of it yet? Y'all use some of the monies yet?
Um, we have, we haven't used any of it yet, we have, because right now, we have to open the bids for the contractors, but we're moving forward to it, yeah.
Okay. Tress, that, do you have things that Commissioner Perry has mentioned? Tress, that DEO thing that Commissioner Parrish had mentioned. Myself and Mr. Allen Pierce went to the meeting that they had here locally.
Yes.
They're specifically for housing, infrastructure, and economic development, but it has to be tied to Hurricane Michael.
Okay.
So, Mr. Parrish, it's valid, and I did ask them in a public open meeting about it being used for our match, and they said, yes, not a problem for mitigation and anything else, as long as it's Hurricane Michael affected stuff.
Yes, yes.
And I don't think that those are actually going to go through to the fall, they're still kind of in the public comment of form in the plan, but yeah, it's good to know that.
Yeah, because those HLP funds have been used, they were actually allocated prior to, probably at a point. And since it didn't occur during the year, they went ahead and released the funds, and that's why we can use it for, yeah.
Actually, Commissioners, if I may, before we open the bids, let's go to page seven of my report. Get my report done before I get to my report, huh? Item 18, I mean, since we're here, we might as well talk about it. At your last meeting, Mr. Pierce discussed a DEO workshop. He attended with Commissioner Jones, where the state's plan for spending the $735 million of community development block grant disaster recovery funds due to Hurricane Michael was discussed. Since then, Mr. Pierce and I met with Mr. Chris Holly, he's now the city's interim city manager, city of Appalachia Cola, to discuss the plan. It was determined at that meeting between the three of us, in order to allow each county in impacted area the opportunity to use these funds for recovery, a resolution should be sent to the governor and the state legislature establishing that county's strategies and priorities. However, the message of each county and city resolution should be similar in its request, so it is received as a regional project. That's, that's the key, a regional request, I'm sorry, so that even though we all have different resolutions, Commissioners, it looks like it's a regional request because there's power when it's a regional request. We all know that now, we're beginning to see that trend more and more. Attached in the agenda packet, it's Gulf County's resolution that speaks to their priorities and desired strategies for your review. At your next meeting, I would like the board to consider a similar resolution that will speak to Franklin County's priorities and desired strategies. So I just wanted to make sure you guys are aware of this, what I'm planning to do at the next meeting. You have a chance to look over Gulf Counties, kind of hit me some edits, wordings, what you like, what you think we should add or remove, so that I have a finished product for you at the next meeting to present so we could approve it and send it on. So we're part of this regional request.
I'd like to add something, if I could, Mr. Chairman. So as your representative at the ARPC, we're having a meeting this month, I can take that also to Liberty and Calhoun, since they're, they're also an affected area. Anyway, try to, if that's the pleasure of the board to do that, I can do that on behalf of this board, just let me know.
And so to follow up on that, the city of Appalachia Cola, Chris being, they're going to do a resolution similar to Gulf Counties, which would be similar to ours. I have not yet reached out to the city of Carrabelle to see how they plan on approaching it, see if they want to use the basis of this, this same resolution to create one for themselves. I will, if that's the direction of the board, if that's, if you guys are good with that. Good? Okay, so I just need you guys to give me a little heads up during the week, let me get this resolution together, and I'll get it to Attorney Schuler for his final review, and I'll present it to you at the next meeting, okay? All right, Commissioners, go back to.
Tess, can I have one more question? Do you know if Pam met with FEMA officials relative to Island View Park inventory of damages? She thought she was going to do that last week.
I was out all last week, but it was my understanding, yes, she did. So they are moving forward, and that's about where, she didn't really express me exactly what they talked about, but yes, I know that they did that last week, so.
Okay.
Okay.
We need some help with that.
I only have two. One is from Hurricane Shutter, JP Roberts.
JP Roberts?
JP Roberts.
JP or JT?
JP, as in Paul.
Okay.
Yep.
Brother name.
And, next one. Is from Florida Retrofits.
Where, where you book them from? You got the location?
JP Roberts is out of Crawfordville.
Crawfordville.
Mm-hmm. They're the ones that put up our sign every year for hurricane days. And Florida Retrofits is out of Palm Bay.
Palm Bay.
So are there amounts on there, or how?
So what they do is, I gave them a list of homes that I've already, we've inspected and looked at, and then they have to give me what it would cost to retrofit or mitigate it to hurricane standards.
Okay.
And then what I do is, I'll, I'll take the lowest of the two bids. JP Roberts is only shutters, and Florida Retrofits has, encompasses all, replacing the roof, doing the gable bracing, replacing the fascia and the soffit and all that stuff.
Okay, pleasure to boot on.
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner. Master.
Did she read the numbers? What are the amounts?